Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 meeting of the Chapelqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing contract negotiations, potential litigation, and advice of counsel. May I have a motion to reconvene the public session? All second floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And please rise, let the leaders slide back on the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our last meeting before the holiday season. And I just want to wish everyone the very best for a very happy holiday season. Of course, I know it's not going to be exactly the same as it was. Some of you will be celebrating virtually. But in any event, I hope that we have happy celebrations while looking forward to rounding the corner on this terrible virus with the news that we have some vaccinations coming up. But speaking of the pandemic, I just want to take this opportunity during this holiday season of giving thanks, I just want to take another opportunity to thank everyone working in this district, our faculty, our custodians, our nurses, all the support staff, and all of the administration for truly going over and above the call of duty. We've had our kids in school through practically the holidays. And if you my fingers crossed that in the next couple of weeks, we'll continue in this way. But we had a great plan, and I think that we feel very lucky that we've been able to keep our schools open until this holiday season. So kudos to all of, we went to all of our staff. I know that it's been a team effort, but a team effort really takes a great leader. And I just want to recognize our incredible superintendent, Dr. Christine Ackerman. Christine, you make the impossible possible. You have an incredible work ethic. You have boundless energy and really inspiring optimism. And we're all so proud to be working with you. And I know that you give credit to your current team, and we agree with you that it's because of everyone working together that we've accomplished this. But you are in a position of leadership, and you put this great team together. And I don't know how we can ever thank you for making this impossible situation work. You pivoted during a pandemic when everyone had no idea what to expect. You got us into remote learning immediately. You got us back in school as soon as we were able to be back in. You have handled all of the quarantines that we expected in such a professional and efficient way. And now you're ready to take on testing if we reach orange and red zones or whatever the new standards will be. It changes on a daily basis almost. But you have met every single challenge undeterred, knowing that you could handle it. And it's been absolutely incredible, Christine. So I want to recognize you and thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything you've done for our district and for the children of this community. So thank you, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. I really appreciate the acknowledgement, Vicki, and the board. I mean, you're incredible partners to us in helping us lead in a way that our children deserve and needed us to in the most difficult of circumstances. But you are correct, I have one fantastic team. They're on stage with me right now, and I do hire well, so I am happy to accept that compliment. And of course, we're lucky that John has been a stable figure here for our leadership, our leadership in the district office.
That's nice.
And you know, my principals will call me in long, calling families, supporting individuals who test positive in the most delicate way and making sure that our kids are safe. So I want to thank them. But of course, I know that the faculty and staff are just burning the midnight oil trying to reinvent education. So I'm really proud to be a part of such a strong school district, educational community. And your foundation, our families and our parents have been overwhelmingly supportive. And so it's time for me to be here, so they're my children, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Christine. And the only other thing I'd like to announce is that we have a joint school board and town board work session regarding the Form 8 code on January 13th at 6:00 p.m., which will take place prior to our regular board meeting on that same date, which starts at 7:30. So the joint work session will be at 6:00 p.m. And that's all I have for the president's report unless anyone else on the board would like to say something at this time before we move on to the superintendent's report. Okay, so I'll hand it over to you, Christine.
All right, we have a lot to cover today. First, I just want to begin by giving our schedule update. So we're December 8th, we're still 100% in K-8, and we're 50% in at the high school in the morning, 50% in in the afternoon. But we do have some students that are attending full day based on individual needs that best serve their educational interests. At this time, we anticipate that lower sports will begin on January 4th, and we released our guidance document to our families as well this afternoon. I just wanted to show a little snapshot of our students last week at K-8 who were fully remote. We did have an uptick in students who are accessing remote instruction. I anticipate that this will continue when we look at the numbers this weekend and next weekend, potentially the first week in January. But we are absolutely going to stay open provided we're able to do so. I did want to show you an update in our quarantine numbers. They're going in the right direction. They're heading down from our high in the middle of November. So this is what it looked like on November 18th, and this is what it looks like in December. So we've had some, we were, we were in good shape up until probably the weekend where we had a couple new cases that impacted the middle school and the elementary school. But considering the circumstances we're in, we are able to stay open where many other districts are not. So we are fortunate that we've been able to structure our program in a way that we have small numbers of students quarantined and we have a positive individual in the building. But I think it's important that we continue to look at this at our meetings so you have an understanding of how many students are out and how many staff are out of the building engaged in remote instruction due to exposure.
Christine, may I, I'm sorry, but I think it's important to reiterate what we've said before that these infections are not, we know this with contact tracing, that the infections are not originating in the school. They're originating through, you know, after-school activities.
Yeah, I would say that it's still very consistent that most of our positive cases are from individuals within the household or from indoor sports, activities that individuals are engaged in. And that includes both students and adults. So that's our pattern. We haven't seen anywhere where we have had exposure happening in our classroom and there's been a spread. But that's consistent across the country, which is why you continue to hear commentary in the media that schools are safe places for students to be. And I think it's because we've structured our buildings in a way that maximizes social distance. Kids are wearing masks, they're engaging in hammering, washing a lot of what we put in place to open. I think it's serving us very well in stopping this spread from happening within our school building. Tony, do you want him to provide an update on staffing?
Sure.
As well?
Thanks, Christine. Not really any significant changes since the last time we talked about staffing. A couple decreased in terms of the number of teachers out of FFCRE child care leave. One more teacher working remotely, so just minor shifts in what was presented to you last time we spoke. As it relates to teacher retirements, if you want to let you know, we had a teacher, elementary teacher at one of the middle schools who announced her retirement effective at the end of this month. On this agenda, you see a recommendation for the person to replace this. That position has been filled. The only position that we have yet to fill officially is our high school special education position. Unfortunately, we've done several rounds of that search, and it just hasn't yielded a strong enough candidate to recommend to you. But we will continue our efforts in that position, hopefully to find a candidate.
So I wanted to provide an update on testing. I had sent out to the community yesterday some new language that came from the Department of Health on how we were to approach testing if we were in the red and armed zone. And so right now, we're not in any zone. We're not in yellow, orange, or red. But what we did learn from the health department and what Governor Paul had mentioned in his comments on November 30th is that if we are, any of us were located in a zone, the new approach instead of shutting for a period of time would be to engage in weekly testing. Now, what's interesting about what has been released is that the R-N zone requirements seem less stringent than the yellow zone requirements, which are supposed to be kind of the opposite of what it's supposed to look like. So this is our thinking now. We have new thinking based on what was released. We're going to land somewhere next week, and I'm going to share with you towards the end of this portion of the presentation how we're going to push that information up. So the new thinking, since we have to likely gauge in weekly testing once we're in a zone, is that we'll probably do that on Monday mornings. And the reason we're choosing Monday morning is because we're testing asymptomatic individuals. We would test anyone that's symptomatic on site. And if we have a student who's positive or a staff member, contact tracing would occur two days prior to the testing, and that would be Saturday. So if we test Monday morning, the students aren't in school and the staff are just coming in for testing, and then they're going into their leaving, operate on like a delay schedule, then if someone's positive, then we won't have to quarantine an entire class of kids and adults. So it really, really makes logistical sense for us to move forward this way. So I'm likely thinking that's probably going to be the approach if we're in the yellow zone. But the way the yellow zone is structured right now is we have to do more testing. So I don't know if we'll be able to accomplish that in a three-hour or a four-hour delay. So just for the community's understanding, right now, what we're thinking is if we are going to test, it'll be on a Monday morning. The schedule of the week will remain the same, but we will probably operate on a delay, a delayed schedule to start to facilitate that for the school community. All right, so at this point, I asked Adam if he could share our student performance because we've gone through a battery of assessments for our elementary and middle school students. So we thought it would be important to share with the larger community how our students are faring through the pandemic with their core skills. So Adam, just.
Yeah, thank you. So just by way of a little bit of background, as an outgrowth of the Strategic Coherence Planning Committee of a couple of years ago, one of the things that was recommended and also reinforced when we had the tri-states visit was to put in place a universal screener, which is typically found in districts. A universal screener is just like a dipstick test for generally reading levels and math levels of students. And we had a selection committee last year. We chose the NWEA MAP assessment, which is really the premier universal screener that's available out there. They have a whole team of researchers, and it's given across the country to hundreds of thousands of kids. You might have seen NPR just did a bit recently to talk about the impact of COVID and whatnot. So they're really the go-to universal screener. It's especially important now with state assessments were canceled last spring due to COVID. This gave us some really good data to be able to understand how our students are progressing, how they're growing academically in both reading and math. So at our last board meeting, the board asked this kind of guiding question that I used to dig into some of our data to report back to you. And the question was, how did COVID impact student growth and achievement over this time? Where we had to shift to all remote learning and then now into this hybrid model. So just as a quick overview of how MAPS works, MAPS stands for Measure of Academic Progress. And there is a score that is the same scale all the way from kindergarten. We start this in first grade all the way up through eighth grade. It's called the RIT score. And the RIT score is almost like a yardstick. There's kind of inches on the yardstick, so that way you can compare students across the grade levels as they move, and you can track their growth over time. So if you, Dr. Ackerman's going to kind of click through this for me. If you look at this slide, this is basically showing us is we give this assessment in the fall of 2019, and then we gave it again in the winter of 2019-20, that was last winter, and then again this fall, 2020-21. And what we get from MAPS is this normed 50th percentile. They give percentiles for all of the students that take the test, and they norm this across the country. Now, an important component of this is they didn't re-norm it based on COVID. They kept their same norm. So what that did for us is it allowed us to compare our students to that norm to see if they were at the 50th percentile or above it or below it, and then give them the test before COVID. And then after the, you know, where we are right now, we can determine our students moving up or down or staying the same across that achievement level. So if you click on, so this is when obviously COVID happened. And so I put a sample student here. This student, you can see, is performing at a level above the norm. So they might be in like 60th percentile or 70th percentile, meaning they scored better than 60% of that norm or 70% of that group norm. But you can see for this student, student A, because they're tracking the same as the norm, their percentile wouldn't change. They'd be in the 60th percentile the first time, and then 60th the second time, 60th the third time. And this is important when we look at our data in just a minute. If you click it again for me, I have a, oh, I called him, this student, student A too. This was supposed to be student B. I apologize, the green student there on the bottom. And you can see another student might be below, but this student achieved more growth in between that fall assessment 1920 and winter 1920. So you can see that that line is a little bit steeper. So that student's normed percentile would have gone up. They might have been in the 40th percentile, and then they went up to the 45th percentile. So what we were trying to figure out is what impacted COVID happened, the shift to remote from the winter. Because conveniently, we gave the assessment last winter, right before we went out on remote. We gave it in February. And then we gave it again just a couple of weeks ago in the fall. So we have good data kind of pre and post, and the norm didn't change. So this was our data from the winter of 1920. This was the average percentile score by grade. So the average current fourth grader when they were third graders when they took the assessment scored in the 67.6 percentile. That was the, so they were above that 50th percentile, which would be the kind of average percentile. So what we were trying to do is we were trying to figure out how did students do because the percentile, the norm didn't change once we had COVID. So if you just click for me, Christine. Got to click again. So if we, if we had no impact of COVID, what we would expect is that orange.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The orange bar. So normal growth would be, these bars would be flat, right? If COVID had a negative impact, if the shift to remote learning had a negative impact, then our students would drop in terms of their percentile rank. So you'd see where that purple bar is, we would drop down lower. And what that meant is that because our norm stayed constant, students did not grow as much or did not achieve as high, and they would have lost their kind of status above that percentile mark. So amazingly, this is what we actually found. This is our, this is our real data. So these are our current fourth graders, fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders. The blue line is actually the previous year. So that, the word says grade four, and there's a blue line and a red line. Those were the same students, the same cohort when they were in third grade. They're the blue bar. They take the assessment, and they scored in the 67.6 percentile. And then when they're in fourth grade, this fall, they took the assessment again, and they scored in the 76th percentile. So for ELA, in every single grade, students actually increased their percentile, their like percentile average for the cohort, which is, I appreciate kind of the looks, we felt the same way. We ran this data over and over again, thinking there must be some kind of mistake in this data. Now, it's important to note that it is average data. So there were some students that really thrived and other students that struggled, that this wasn't indicative of every single student making the same level of growth. But overall, as an average for the entire school district, the students actually increased their percentile rank based on the remote learning. That was the effect.
Adam, I'm sorry to interrupt. That is all of the students who took the exam whether they're remote or not now?
Yep, that's all of our students. It's all of our data. Yeah, we follow them by cohort. So equally impressive is the math data. And you can see the same thing. Now, remember that if those bars were even, if that fourth grade orange bar and that fourth grade purple bar, they really should say 62 for both of them. And that would mean that the students made the appropriate norm growth in that period of time. We actually see that they have, in every single grade, they've actually done better as a result of the, not as a result of the, we thought we might see flat, if not some regression, but we actually saw improvement in every single grade. And I think another interesting thing to point out for this math data is that you can see that that gap kind of stretches out as the students move through the system. So this is indicative of students growing more than a year's worth of growth each year. And that's why you see that continuing to kind of stretch out as they get up towards the eighth grade. So amazingly, by the time students leave our eighth grade, they're in the 84th percentile. The average is in the 84th percentile in math. So that's, that's the data that we have. And obviously, we're digging into this data very deeply to identify which pockets of students grew the most, which pockets of students didn't grow or even regress, and how can we support the students that regress? Because there are a lot of subgroups of data that begin to sort this data when it comes to various classes, also various demographics, and students with disabilities, English language learners, things like that. So we have granular data for all the students. These reports are going to be released to parents this Thursday. We have a webinar that Josh and I recorded, and also a letter that's going to go out describing this to parents. And then all the student reports will be released and uploaded up into the campus backpack on Thursday morning. So we'll, we've already previewed that with a letter, and then we'll send another letter Thursday morning to let parents know that the reports are in the backpack.
So that's a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
So that's great data. And I guess the question I have is although none of us wanted to find ourselves in that remote learning situation, there were clearly some things that worked for at least some kids. Is there, in your digging of data, is there any way to sort of suss any of that out? Like what it was that might have worked for some of these kids to help them grow like that?
Yeah, I shared this data with the administrative team this week and also the professional development team, and everybody had some really good guesses. I think the clues are in that data. As we start to dig into that data and identify the pockets of great success and other pockets where students struggled, we can start to identify those best practices that led to it. I think what it really comes down to for me is if you ask me to identify the one thing, it's that a lot of work was shifted to kids. In order to participate, kids did, they did a lot of practice. They did a lot of, to do direct instruction for large periods of time on Zoom is really challenging. And so a lot of work was pushed out to students. Many lessons were short and tight, generally speaking. And in order to participate, students had to read. And they say, in order to see great reading gains, reading is like running. So the more they do it, the more they gain. And they actually say the research is pretty clear that practice reading is even more beneficial than access to a high-quality reading teacher. So just the volume of students reading, whether that's independent reading at home that parents were supporting or just reading to participate, read the directions, read the instructions, read the, you know, whatever it was that was provided to teachers probably also contributed to the gains that we saw.
I mean, it seems like in a way, it just pushed up the level of engagement, which reaped a lot of benefits. And I was curious, because I know this was in one of messages in the community newsletter, that I also was wondering if the schedule was beneficial to them in terms of the breaks, the sleep, the not being overscheduled, and the sort of the ability to focus based on their schedule might really have helped them. But that's, I mean, it's amazing. I think we're all just like really happy to see this data. It's fantastic. So.
Yeah, I'm really amazed. I think it confirms our thinking based on all of the work that's been done here in the past time to ensure that students take part of their learning and, you know, have less lecturing by teachers and really take more ownership. And I think this just confirms it. Well, I'm very hopeful that we can take this example and try to incorporate the lessons learned into normal times. Not that teachers won't be involved, but I think it just confirms the work that's preceded COVID. But I just have to say that I am amazed. And we can do a lot of guesswork as to why this just happened, but I am curious what you uncovered. Because I know this period was very difficult for some students.
Is NWEA doing research into differences across the country or anything like that? Are they digging deeper into the collective data?
They are. They have some reports posted on their website, and I actually signed up for a webinar that they have scheduled for next week for educators to dive more deeply into what they're seeing across the, across the country. As you'd expect, what they've reported so far is that economy matters when it comes to like a lower socioeconomic demographic and how students fare in a remote environment, access to technology, access to reliable Wi-Fi, some of those things that I think are, you know, we're fortunate to be able to provide access for any community member that may not have it, that, you know, that's part of our schools. And so we didn't have some of those problems that a lot of communities struggled with. Interestingly, what NWEA did report is that reading, reading scores across the country seemed to be surprisingly strong through the pandemic, that math seemed to be hard more, like hit harder. And that probably has to do with just access to good quality direct instruction and practice when it comes to math. So we didn't see those same trends here in Chapelqua, but I think that there's, you know, there's some reasons for that. And many of those come down to just the environment at home that students have to learn and also access to reliable technology and Wi-Fi. So without those being major obstacles for us and having a lot of the front-loaded professional development and access to technology and using technology tools all along, I think our teachers and students just pivoted, you know, they made it pivot quickly and figured it out and moved forward. And so they were able to see gains as a community. And I understand that all communities don't have that same kind of level of access and resource, so they struggle through it more so than we do.
Are there other districts in the region that use this as well that you've spoken to or anybody about?
There are. We actually have a regional assistant superintendent meeting on Friday to talk about assessments. So Friday morning, we're going to get together through Zoom and kind of talk about our data and what we're seeing with our trends and how we're going to support students that are still struggling, regardless of the increase in the average that we saw.
It's interesting, though, that the national data is saying that reading got stronger. And I wonder if maybe one takeaway is that when kids actually don't have anything else to do, they will sit down and read.
No, but I mean, you know, it's interesting, it's to Jane's point about having a lighter schedule. Like it's not, it's not just the school schedules. It's everything that our kids do, you know, across the country that we couldn't do for so long. But, you know, there's, we certainly.
Now that activities are back, it'll be really interesting to see if the trend continues into the spring.
Adam, I'm wondering if when you look into the data, will you be looking at issues such as stress? Because I can imagine there perhaps was less stress on students with less activities. Perhaps, you know, maybe less social stress as well, being in the buildings and whatever, you know, happens socially. And also the way that kids can play off each other with, you know, sort of academic competition. There might have been a lot less of that. I'm just wondering if that made it just easier to do the work and to focus.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that data here collected, and certainly MAPS doesn't collect that kind of data. But it would be interesting to do some thinking about other surveys that we have and other ways to kind of map, map, maps to other data points that we have.
Yeah, how do you map the stress?
How overscheduled students feel. Well, they have, they have reported to us over the, over the years. We surveyed students, you know, we did a survey a couple of years ago. I think I remember seeing a student survey where we had some indications, and we were using it to support our work around Ruler and SEL. So it would be interesting to kind of map those things together to see the impact of it. But, you know, we've heard from students pretty regularly throughout the district over the years that they do, they do feel over-scheduled, and there's that press to achieve and press to do more. And so, you know, you have to wonder if COVID gave them a bit of a respite to a certain extent.
Yeah, I mean, on the other hand, it did create stress on different levels. The stress of isolation, and it did create a lot of mental health issues. So I don't want to neglect to point that out, but there's another side of that too.
Can I ask a technical question about RIT? Whether that stands for anything or that's just the name used for that scale?
Yeah, I believe it's named after one of the researchers. It's called like a ROCH. I want to say ROCH. So it's a person's name that I think designed this whole scaling system.
Right, because like the number is just to understand the scale, but it's their own sort of metric.
It's their own metric, yeah. You can, you can actually find on the NWEA website, you can find the normed RIT score. So it'll give you a grade level, and they actually do it even by week. So when a student takes the assessment in their first week of fourth grade, that's different than if they take it in the third week of fourth grade or the fifth week of fourth grade. So they factor in how long the student has been in that grade level. And then they have to. And then they have their, their own measure, which I think is actually helpful to us, because it's a, it's a new measure that's mapped across the grade level, so, so parents can actually see using that same standard all the way through from first grade all the way up to eighth grade. So, yeah, it's that kind of RACH unit. And there's, there's more information on the Maps website where they explain it.
I would just like to say, thank goodness we moved towards having this assessment system. We were about, oh my God, so we'd be in a place today where we could have a meaningful discussion about how our students were performing. Because if we didn't have this system in place, it would be much more difficult to chart student progress over time, particularly in the pandemic. So very grateful that the district made this decision when it did. It was really good space today to be able to talk about student progress in a way that they need us to be able to across the elementary, middle school grades. Particularly, when we're talking about achievement right now, and being really pleased with how our students are progressing, but we also can identify students who are struggling and develop differentiated techniques through technology and through our instruction to support them. So what we were thinking about, what we are going to do is, we had a COVID meeting with our parents in August, we're going to do that again next week. Because I, we need to, I'm hoping by that time I have some more clarity around the yellow zone, and I want to talk, just give the community an update on where we are with COVID, but also I'd like Adam to present student progress at that meeting as well. So we are going to hold a webinar for families next week. Could like to just hear from us, almost like a, like a status update on the, on the district.
State of the Union.
Yeah, state of the union address. Because I think these are really important issues that need a separate meeting, a separate webinar. It's not going to be that long, but it'll, it'll, I think, address some of the areas that parents are thinking about, and that we want them to be thinking about as we head into the, to the new year. So, okay. So two other things that we wanted to talk about tonight in relation to the agenda is we have two requests for proposals. And so when we need to hire individuals for professional services, and we believe it's going to exceed a certain amount of money, there's a policy in place that we need to go through an RFP process to solicit potential contractors who would be qualified to do the work under a set of parameters that we outline, which is called a proposal, an RFP proposal. And, and so what happens is that the proposal's developed, and in certain circumstances, we get feedback from the board, or certain segments of the community, the proposal's put out, and in this case, in special education, and in, in our equity inclusion and anti-racism and social justice professional learning, interested parties will apply, and then the Board of Education will interview and reward the RFPs through an interview process, much like we've had for other processes. But I think because of the nature of these two RFPs, it's important that Tony and Ellen and Adam talk about what the proposals look like with you, that we post them online, if we will do tomorrow morning under our agenda, so that the community can view them before we, before we post them publicly, before John posts them publicly for our process. And then just talk about our timeline. So the first proposal that we're going to talk about tonight is, I just kind of want to roll up the slides, is special education. So Ellen, did you want to start?
Sure. So this is originally, I think this was presented to you last year. It's a, you know, the purpose tonight is to sort of update you on the timeline. It's a really comprehensive, low-end special education, everything from pre-referral, right? So a response intervention, supports in buildings before students are even considered to be for evaluation by the committee on special education, all through all of our procedures, our practices, you know, everything from the way our systems work to the way different stakeholders feel about the process as they go through it. I think Adam was instrumental in creating it. It's really, really impressive, and I'm very much looking forward to it. I think it's, it's something the community is very interested in, and I know I am, and Karen Smith is, we want to make sure that the work that we do is the best work that we could possibly do to have with our students. So the timelines, this update tonight, the fourteenth of December, we'll launch the request for proposal with the deadline of January fifteenth for submissions. And then you can see in February, we'll review the applications with you. In March, we'll do interviews and reference checks. April, appoint a firm. May, June, there'll be a timeline for summer data collection and planning, then we'll get into a comprehensive review of the launch, review launch, and then we'll begin a strategic plan development. So once we hear from them, we'll have, you know, an opportunity to really make a plan, right? How are we moving forward with our, our special education department and services in the district? And then implement that strategic plan in the spring of 2022. So I, I just can't tell you about who's asked the vice president about engaging in this process. I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for the.
And then Tony, could you talk about the equity?
Sure. So what we're looking for in our request for proposals here is to work with a consultant, organization, individual, or does professional learning around social justice, equity, and anti-racism. So we identified a bunch of things that were included in the RFP, a lot of areas that we're about to focus on, for professional learning opportunities for all faculty and staff. And you'll see some of them highlighted here, thinking about work associated with identity, self-reflection, sociocultural experiences, unpacking the, the concept of bias, of unconscious and conscious bias, which we started to do as part of our district-wide book study with Dr. Chu's book, thinking about things like microaggression, and code language, and cultural appropriation, and then just really unpacking the concepts of equity, social justice, diversity, anti-racism, what that means like, and what that continuum is about. And knowing that it's a pretty lengthy and ongoing experience, right? It's not like you just buy a program and you do it. Like this is, you know, an issue that's impacted our country for hundreds of years. We're not going to eradicate it with an RFP, but we're going to invest in the learning and really commit to this, and partnering with an outside consultant will help us do that work in a more systemic and thoughtful way. And our timeline, similar at the front end to what Ellen just outlined for you, we'd like to put out the launch next week, give people about a month to submit their proposals, and then review those with leadership team and the board at the end of January, just pushing up the timeline slightly there, making a decision in February, and then making a recommendation to you in March, so that we can begin some work in the spring. I think there has to be an assessment of anyone we partner with, so they can understand what's, what's happening internally, before they make any decisions and suggestions about what type of professional learning we should engage in. And that would then, like, if they begin in the summer, only into next year.
Right, so the timeline on this RFP is a little different than the special education RFP, because we have a cares committee next meeting next week, and we want to make sure the cares committee has the opportunity to provide a speedup or make a follow-up, right?
Tony, what type of, like, what kind of firms or practices, like, who do you expect to respond?
It's a good question. I think it's actually a cross-section of individuals and organizations out there. You know, something locally that's pretty big is NYU has their Metro Center, right? Which we worked with a little bit recently, but they have a division as well that's about this, Bank Street has an arm that is very much entrenched in this work. But then you have individuals who are doing this work based on their own experience, based on their own research. And so I've actually heard from about five or six random organizations or individuals who are aware of our work, because either they've seen the board meeting, they saw the overview of what we've done so far, and we're kind of actually waiting to see the RFP come out, because they're considering applying for that one. So, yeah. So more than I, I kind of had the initial thought initially, like, what is it going to be, who are we going to get? But there are a growing number of organizations and consultants and individuals that are doing this work. And I think it's just about making sure we find the right, you know, people to partner with, and to ensure that the, the perspective that we partner with is representative of a diverse, you know, view, not to perpetuate what's already happening.
And can we have a logistical question? So the individual or firm that answered the RFP, would they be the one to actually deliver the professional development plan, or would they be the one to tell us or to advise us of which plan or other consultant to hire? Do you understand what I'm?
I do, I do. And I think it's a little bit of a blend of both. I, I think that whoever we partner with around this RFP should help lead and facilitate a lot of the professional learning. But much like we see with, with professional learning, there'll be some term key, some stuff that we engage in ourselves, and then are able to sort of share with staff internally after being trained by, by those who have an area of expertise. I think it's, it's a bit of both, and I also think this is ongoing. So I'm not quite sure how long this initial RFP takes us, and then having to determine what we need beyond that, where we go next, and whether or not we potentially need a different RFP two years down the road to, to expand this work. Because I think that's an important question. I think, I think the priority is identifying an expert who's going to inform our work and lead the work in a way that we may not be able to do at this time.
Right. That was good, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I want to say Ellen, Ellen as well, for her, 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 I just want to add something about the special RFP.
Sure.
Because I think it's important for people to understand why it's taken so long. We've gotten maybe one or two questions about that, because we introduced this back in March, right before COVID hit. So there, there was a concern that we would not be able to do that RFP work adequately during a very challenging period, and we were also waiting to fill your position with you. So, and so I, I think that this is, this is the right time, and we're going to be able to do this work really effectively. So I just wanted to give a very brief explanation as to why we've done enough time to get there.
Christine, so I also just wanted to thank our equity leadership team and teachers who are working with me. They helped really inform that RFP, also that he saw the information included there. So I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, so I also wanted to update the board based on feedback from the last meeting. So we're doing a quarterly update on our bias, hate speech, indiscrimination incidents. And so the question was, you know, what were the nature or the categories of the incidents themselves? And so I just wanted to share with you that all the incidents that were addressed by the administration were classified as hate speech. Because the high school incident occurred over the summer, and the code of conduct had not been changed at that point, it was classified as harassment. But if we were to move forward and reclassify that, if that occurred after the code was adopted, it would be, would have been considered hate speech, so I did include it in here. Since it was addressed, since the incident was addressed, the discipline was administered in the new school year, I wanted to make sure that that was incorporated into the, into the, into the, into the report. So this is the same statistics as I shared last meeting. I'll update you again at the second meeting in, in January, as to where we are at the mid-year point. And at that meeting as well, we'll be doing an update on our equity, social justice, and anti-racism work. Okay, we have a lot of grants on the agenda, I think, so, Adam, are you ready?
Yes, fantastic part of the agenda, right? So, yeah, these are exciting grants. We, we have, the first one is 5.2. Our, we've asked a, a lot of our middle school music teachers this year, that their, their rooms are used for core academic classes, because they're large spaces generally, so they've been teaching music on, on kind of mobiley on parts and whatnot. So this grant will get some, some music equipment that's a little bit more mobile, some Bluetooth speakers and things like that. And then the board has experienced an executive session using kind of Zoom on a laptop and trying to hear, and it can be challenging, especially when you're teaching music. So that will equip both of our middle schools and all of our music teachers in those middle schools with the equipment that they need for higher quality sound and recording and things like that. So we appreciate the CSF, CSF's generous donation there, and Kim Neid wrote that grant on behalf of the music teachers at the middle schools. And then 5.3 is similar to some of the other flexible seating grants that you've seen. It's just, it provides some additional options for students. Students love the, the choice, and in many cases can focus better when they have some choice, and teachers work hard with the youngsters to make sure they make good choices, but prepare to things that they, they can't so understand with and want not to engage and stay engaged. So that's 5.3, and we appreciate the CSF's donation there. 5.4 and 5.5 are very similar. As you can imagine, when you're teaching with masks, and you have students that are socially distanced, and in many cases, there are much larger spaces than we typically would use, cafeterias and music rooms and things like that. We are, and we have found that we've got a few areas that are challenging for students to hear. And so these, these grants will equip the teachers with kind of lavalier mics, so that they, in some cases, it's a lavalier mic which will hook up through Bluetooth to a laptop, so that students on Zoom can hear more clearly. And in other cases, they're like on the right, there are amplification systems, so a teacher can speak into a mic, and then there's a small speaker that will amplify their voice. So these are some of the things that we didn't anticipate when we did our technology purchases last spring and into the summer, when we bought all of our webcams and things like that, that we use in our, our classrooms to be in this hybrid model. So the CSF is helping us out with these, we appreciate that. The next four grants are from the Newcastle United for Youth Coalition in, in town, and they're going to help us with several things. One of them is we, we are in the process of rewriting our health curriculum, so they're going to make a generous donation. They actually get some federal grant money, and they're able to distribute that federal grant money out into, you know, into the community, and so we can apply for that through these little kind of mini-grant process. So these are our kind of gifts to the district around these focus areas. One of them is health curriculum development, we're in the process of rewriting health curriculum. We've seen some health curriculum consultants over the last couple of years that we've used. And then 5.2, or 5.20, 5.20 is about some purchases for middle school libraries. So last year, with the book, Hey Kiddo, we had just great success with students engaging in the, in the kind of storyline in that book around some age-appropriate topics for middle school students. And this grant will allow us to buy quite a few middle school classroom library selections for students that have topics that will allow teachers to engage with students around issues of substance abuse, protective factors, risk factors, things like that. So we've got 34 different book titles that we picked out, and Jamie Edelman led that, led that initiative. And we also have 5.21 is a health and wellness learning team. Learning teams, that one's going to be led by Jason Simo. Learning teams are a structure that we use after school, so it's voluntary for teachers to participate in, and there's some compensation attached to it, where after school, a group of teachers will meet several times over the course of the year to kind of dive deeply into some professional development around the topic. So Newcastle United for Youth is going to help us out with health and wellness learning teams, that'll also support our Ruler initiative, and it helps to subsidize a professional development budget. And then the last one is 5.22 is Candle Workshops. This, this is all about creating a system for our varsity student athletes to mentor and act as role models for younger students. So they want to bring in some professional developers to help us create that system for athletics, which we think will be a nice opportunity. So we appreciate all the generous donations from the CSF and the Newcastle United for Youth. It is a lot, and we really appreciate it. We want to make sure those dollars are well spent and really lift the level of the work that we do with our faculty and our students.
Thank you, Adam. And thank you to our partners in helping support our program. We are very lucky to have a foundation in Newcastle, that we're keen to be able to enhance our performance, so we're very grateful. Okay, so I wanted to talk about this other property. I've been talking about this property for probably two years now, and I wanted to give the community an update on where we were in terms of selling the property, since there's a listing price on the agenda tonight, after the board had selected the realtor who would be moving forward as we put the property back in the market again. Okay, so just to go back in time, 1973, before I was born, there was a bond that ran them to authorize the board to issue bonds for the property, to purchase the property. And so we bought it for $125,000, and it's about 20, about 20 acres. And so the thought was, at some point, we may need to expand the district, and that might be a place to build. But long story short, we decided to build in a different location, Seven Bridges. So back in 2010, the board decided they were going to sell that property. In order to maximize the amount of, of revenue that could be generated, it was decided long before any of us were here, that, that the property would be put through an approval process through the planning board, so it could be subdivided, and that's been happening ever since. And so. And so there's been multiple contractors that have moved in and out to be able to support that approval process over the course of 10 years. And so at different stages, money has been approved to support the contractors that needed to submit the paperwork to the town planning board to approve the subdivision. And so last year, we became aware that the board had allocated a certain amount of money for particular contractors to work with them. But three of them went over that allotted amount. And so these resolutions happened throughout different years. And so we had to do some work to be able to move forward in a way that made sense, but also aligned with our policies because this was outside the bounds of the Board of Education policies that authorized work to be completed for professional services. So to date, we've spent about $550,000 through the approval process with the planning board to get to a place where they allowed us to move forward with preliminary approval back in March 2019. So what happens is they, so over four years submitting paperwork, they got to a place where they said, okay, this is, you are now ready to get final approval. And so there's work that needs to be done in order for that final approval to happen so that we could list the property as a property that has been approved for subdivision. Okay, so because there was overage, we stopped the whole process and the board authorized a few different steps. So the first was they had the district attorney, John, our claims auditor at the time, and myself review what had happened that got us to the place where there was an overextended, not over-expended term. And we also, the board authorized a forensic audit with an independent person to come in and look at what happened. And so we anticipated that that process became complicated because of COVID. And so we anticipated that would be completed by the end of this school, end of this calendar year. And that the next step would be after the report is reviewed by the board, that the policy committee will recommit and probably make some adjustments to some of our policies based on the findings. The board also wanted to determine whether or not it made fiscal sense to move forward with final approvals. And so to do that, the Board of Education engaged in the RFP process. And then our last meeting approved contracts in order for the next phase of work to move forward in order to be at the place where the town planning board approved this subdivision in its final stage, right? So what happened was in November, the board had authorized us to move forward with the contractors that need to do the work in order for the final approval to be issued. But we also have to address some outstanding payments of work that was completed that we had not yet paid for because I stopped the whole process when I identified that there was a problem. So there's two resolutions on the Board of Education agenda tonight that address the work that was completed but not paid for due to the decision to halt all payments until we could figure out what happened. And so at this time, these five professional services contractors are engaging in the work based on your authorization back in November to get us to the place where the final approval will hopefully take place with the planning board so the property can be sold as a subdivided property. And it will be listed as such by our realtor. But in order to ensure we are not in a situation where we're over-expending again without authorization, I'm leading the project management meetings. And so we're meeting, right now we're going to meet bi-weekly until the paperwork is submitted to the planning board for final approval. And then if the planning board decides that more work needs to be done, then the process will be to come back to the Board of Education so that you can decide whether or not we're going to engage in more professional work with these five specific contractors to move forward with the project. That way there's a transparent accountability for the monies that are being spent and the work that's being done in order to bring this project to completion. So I thought maybe this would be a good time if anyone had any questions or we needed to maybe comment on what I've shared because it's pretty complicated in a lot of ways. But it's also, it makes sense for us to move forward because of the value of the property when you compare what it would be marketed at and worth as subdivided versus not. And that I think we grappled a lot with in terms of whether or not we should move forward with the approval process. I didn't know if people wanted to make comments about that.
Before we get to that, I just want to be clear that, so we've been with the planning board on this for the past four or five years. Did I hear that correctly? Now he goes back. It's been a while, but it's hard off the top of my head to remember from my own memory, but...
Right, so the started, paperwork started to be submitted to the planning board in 2015.
2015. And so one of the last things you said is we still can't be sure that the planning board won't ask us to do more.
That's correct.
So is this typical of the planning board to take this amount of time with the property? I mean, I've got to say that I'm a bit dismayed by that, by the prospect that we might not be done with the planning board.
So my understanding is that the heavy lift has occurred. And so once the preliminary approval was adopted by the planning board, the work that needs to take place between now and final approval is not at the same level or value as what it was to get to that place where the preliminary approval was approved. So if you look at the RFPs and the work that's left to be done, it's not a substantial amount of work. What I don't know is when that work is done and submitted, if there'll be more work that needs to occur at the behest of the planning board and what that will look like.
I mean, it seems that, would they be able to let us know? I mean, it seems that we're at the mercy of the process where we don't know what the real rules are. We don't, we don't know what to expect here. And I mean, I guess I'm trying to get at whether or not we can kind of have a conversation with them about what we can expect. So that doesn't seem to be unreasonable.
I think that's a great question. Now, I will share with you that the planning board has submitted to our consultants what needs to be done for final approval. So that's what has happened. So I'm not, so in theory, in practice, we should have everything we need to do. We should be able to submit it and it should be approved. I just don't, based on the four-year, five-year process that occurred before this place, I don't want to be disingenuous and say, I think that's what's actually going to happen. I just know that we have what they indicated they need done in order for them to grant final approval at this time.
I was just going to add that, I know we all had a lot of questions about this, but when we did the RFPs in terms of the remaining work, what we heard from the various contractors and subcontractors is what Christine was saying, which I think, you know, for anyone listening out there tonight, that that's what we needed to know, like where are we in this process? Does it make sense for us to move forward in this way to finish this job even though it went higher than anyone would have anticipated? And we consistently got from all the contractors and subcontractors that, you know, the lion's share is done, that what is left to be done before final approval was quite small in the scheme of it. And, you know, quote unquote, should all go according to plan, this should allow the final approvals to come in. And even though we're obviously not the planning board and we don't know if they will have questions or require further work by all of these subcontractors, it was indicated to us that that should not, in the normal course of business, happen. So it seemed a wise decision, even though we're outlaying more money, that this amount is quite small for a larger term and it made sense to move forward thinking that these approvals should be for a time.
Yeah, no, I think it's worth noting that we also, in interviewing realtors to list the property, there was unanimous agreement and it's rare to have unanimous agreement so conclusively that it would be a much higher sales price, substantially higher sales price to sell the property with the approvals versus without. And given how much money had already been sunk into getting the approvals, we were really looking at this juncture as to whether the additional monies were worth spending in order to get the approvals. And based on the differential in the potential sales price, it seemed that it made sense to go forward because it seems silly to forfeit the higher sales price at this point for what's not actually relative to the overall cost, much more of a spend.
And I can also add that having sat in on at least one of the planning board meetings prior to the preliminary approval resolution, that resolution does provide a lot clearer direction for the checklist than the previous direction had, which was a lot more back and forth. So I think at this point, we have to take that leap of faith that this really is the last step and we'll tick those boxes and we'll get that final approval. I think time is of the essence at this point.
Yeah, and so just in terms of the real estate process, we had the property listed, the listing expired, we had the pandemic and we needed to go for an RFP to relist the property. So we've gone through that process. So tonight is the night where you approve the listing price. So that's where we are at the moment. So I just, I wanted to share that timeline as well. So I think it makes sense to move forward in the way that we are. It just doesn't feel great because we've spent so much money to get to this place but to not move forward because we've spent so much money? Doesn't make sense based on the value of the property to complete the subdivision process the way that we should in order to list the property at the maximum amount of, maximum price to gain the most revenue. And so that's why I'm recommending to you that we move forward, even though it doesn't feel great based on the process that got us to this place. I just think it's in the best interest of the district.
And I do think that there's an amount of discomfort knowing that we could have more follow-ups after and not having any type of guarantee. But it sounds like this is the right path with you kind of in the driver's seat on this and pushing towards a favorable. One question I had is, did you have any idea on the timing of having everything through to the planning board if we go forward?
Right, so that's a great question. There is a part of this where the DEP is involved. So I have a better idea, our next meeting is the 15th. They have to resubmit to the DEP some paperwork. And so they anticipate that process might be 30 days based on their submission. So the first step is, are they able to submit the paperwork on the 15th? Because they have to do some work to be able to get to that place. And then once it's submitted, they have to reach out to their liaison and see if they can turn that around in a certain amount of time because they're updating what they've already submitted, but because there's such a significant time lapse, they're not sure of the turnaround time. So actually, we'd be in a better position to answer that probably in January.
Okay.
I know a lot about subdividing.
Yes, I do.
So that, I mean, that was a pretty long superintendent's report, but we had a lot of important information to cover. I do want to say, even though we're not approving RFPs tonight, I probably will adjust the number on the special ed RFP because I think there's going to be confusion. We have it listed as 12, but if that was a number, that would be used for a different RFP. So just to be very clear, what RFP is attached to what. But I do want to remind the community that we will post both of them. So if they have any feedback they'd like to share before the final RFP is pushed out. For special education, they should email Ellen and for the equity inclusion and anti-racism, social justice, professional learning, they should reach out to Tony. And if I don't have an opportunity to say it, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, a happy new year, and we're looking forward to 2021. We need a different kind of year for us. It's not worth it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine.
No problem.
And everyone else. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports. We don't think we have anything to audit. Do we have a report from facilities?
I'll give a very brief report. The facilities committee, first, as you guys met last week and discussed the status of the roofs and the need for budgeting and planning to address those. We did, however, agree that we were going to think on it a little bit more in the next week. So other than we had a discussion, there's not a lot to report in terms of guidance or direction. But I do expect this to come up as the budgeting process continues to proceed forward.
Right, and perhaps we could do that in the context of the whole budgeting process and knowing where we are in the budget with all of the unexpected expenditures that we have. It would be good to put everything in context. Is that it for facilities? And O'Hill, do you have something for wellness?
Yeah, just very briefly, I spoke about our committee meeting at our last meeting in terms of that we want to, that we're going to be pushing out these, if you have three-minute content areas around mental health and wellness. So I just wanted to thank Kelly and the PTA for being so willing to partner with us and for frankly, doing a lot of the heavy lifting here in terms of the tech piece and pushing this out to the community. So we have two great community members who are part of the Wellness Committee who are developing content for the next PTA newsletter. We're actually going to be starting this in, I think they all go out on Sundays. And so keep your eyes open. We're hoping that this will be a great sort of monthly feature in partnership between the Wellness Committee and the PTA. We're pretty excited to start it.
I'll translate. Thank you to the PTA as well. Jane, do we have any communications? I don't think so. And I know that policy, we have that on our agenda, so we'll do that. Let's see, the cares committee, we will be meeting December 14th. Like Christine said, we'll be going over the RFP for work on equity. We will continue our SWOT analysis. And we're very happy that our Director of Equity Inclusion and Wellness, Philip Marcus, will be joining us for that. We welcome him, but I just want to welcome him again. Very happy to have him here. And so that will be December 14th. Let's see, anything from the green committee? I think that's all, right?
Warren and I actually, yeah, Warren and I actually did, the green committee did. Maybe I can just give you a quick summary.
Yes.
Our next meeting's on January 19th. It was our first meeting. I had just joined and Warren had just joined previously. So I had overseen the green committee. So we spent some time reviewing the previous work, reviewing the website. We have a website that has some dated material that we wanted to update and getting to know each other and setting some goals as we go forward with regard to how we can work with students and faculty and facilities to make sure we're running as green an operation as we can. So that was our first meeting, it was a kickoff meeting. And like I said, our next meeting is January 19th. So we look forward to digging into that work. I'm sure Warren can give you a more thorough update maybe at the next meeting.
No, that's great, thank you. Thank you, Adam. And I just want to report that there is an upcoming program given by the Westchester Parkland School Boards Association that a lot of us will be attending. Park and School Boards Association that a lot of us will be attending this Thursday on teaching about racism, on blended learning, and mental health. Did I miss anything on committee report? Okay. And now we'll move on to public commentary. We don't have a lot of people. Oh, no, in our audience, but I see one person coming up to take a public comment. Thank goodness. Please state your name, identify yourself, even though we know who you are.
Hi, everyone. I'm glad to be first in line. My name is Kelly Mofield and I'm the President this year of the Chappaqua PTA. And I just wanted to give a hearty and warm welcome to Philip Marcus on behalf of the PTA. Peggy and I met with him and we think he's going to be a great addition to the district and we appreciate all that you guys have done to bring him. And we're so happy he's here and we're excited for the PTA Diversity Committee to meet him and get to work and find out about his great plans for the district. That's number one. Number two, I wanted to recognize that this is National Inclusive Schools Week and give a thank you to the administration for each one of the schools, particularly the assistant principals who've gone out of their way to help the Special Education Committee of each of the schools and the Chappaqua PTA work on events for the students this week so that they can recognize and celebrate inclusion in our schools. And as I was sitting here, the only person in the audience, I was thinking back on years in the past when it was National Inclusive Schools Week and different people stood up and spoke about it. Jackie McCarthy is one who regularly stood up and talked about how important inclusion is in our schools and how grateful so many people are that we are officially an inclusive school district. Other people that I've heard have come back, and I'm sure you guys probably remember these, but have come back and talked about how being part of an inclusive school changed their perspectives on what they wanted to do in their lives, that they met people in their classrooms that were differently abled and it made a difference, a long-lasting difference in their lives, being accepting and learning about differences and being inclusive generally. And I think it's really great that we are here and it's something that we should really celebrate. I just wanted to thank the school for partnering with us this week and recognize all of the events that the Special Education Committee has put together. Tracy Putenza and Jeanne Malcolm are the Chair and Vice Chair this year for the week in the different, at every level of school. And also, I want to shout out to Alex McCarthy for a great video that she made for the PTA that was shown, I think, to everyone in the different schools this week on inclusivity and why it's important.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Okay, I think that concludes our public comment period.
Are you sure?
I think so. Okay, and so let's get to approvals and notifications. We're going to approve some minutes here. I'd like, I have just one item. So may I have a motion to approve item 3.1, to accept the minutes of the November 18th, 2020 Board Meeting?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of the November 18th Board Meeting?
Okay, any comments?
Ask for directions.
All in favor, please, they are. Okay, so let's start on the policies with item 3.2, Policy 5080, Title IX, sexual harassment policy for students. This will be our second reading and hopefully adoption. So would the Policy Committee or Christine want to reintroduce or make any statements?
I would just, yeah, I would just say after our last board meeting, we didn't receive any feedback to re-meet, to adjust any of the policies. And that's understandable since this is all legal language. So I don't, I don't know if it makes sense to go through the policies and discuss them one by one since the language itself is tied into legislation. And so after you move through these policies and potentially approve them tonight, at the next meeting, I'll be appointing people to different positions based on the language within these policies. Those are like multiple steps to moving forward.
So Christine, now would that then fill in that section at the bottom with each that is named?
Yep. Oh, yes, and then we actually are, our team has training with David Shaw when we return from, from the holiday break around these new policies. And that's when I'll place people in homes. Just want the policies approved first so then Tony and I can go back and figure out who makes, who it makes sense to place where.
Right, and Christine, would you say that the policies that follow this one on the agenda through items 3.6, this would not be the grievance procedure? Or would the grievance procedure? Would some of the, would it make sense to take some of these together as making them consistent?
I would recommend taking them, they all have the same thing. You may want to take them right together. And then you may want to take 3.7 separately.
That's what I was intending, yeah, the policy. Right.
Yes, basically, so much of the language is prescriptive that that's part of why there wasn't much to change based on feedback. But given, once the amendments had been made to those other policies, the grievance policy had been replaced and it was now redundant and not necessarily consistent with what we have to have legally right now.
Okay, so based on what Christine was telling us, I think we'll take 3.7 separately. So also, the motion was made for item 3.2. We've had a discussion, so all in favor of approving the policy under item 3.2, please say aye. Now, may I have a motion to take items 3.3 through 3.6 together? This would be for Policies 9049, Sexual Harassment for Employees, Policy 0120, Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity Policy, Policy 5052, Harassment, Bullying, and Discrimination Prevention and Intervention, and Policy 0119, Title VI, Civil Rights Act. So may I have a motion to approve all these items? I will second. Any further discussion? Questions on these? All in favor, please say aye. Okay, now may I have a motion on item 3.7? This is Policy 3015, the grievance procedure related to Title IX. Having been replaced on updated policy.
Almost your good time.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion on this one? Is there anything about this with Christine? Is there further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations, Hillary. Love policies. Okay, I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I will move item 4.1 instructional as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I will move item 4.2 non-instructional as presented. May I have a second? Any discussion? Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 5, this is our consent agenda. Let's see. Just making sure I have the revised agenda. All right, so I will ask for a motion on our consent agenda, which consists of items 5.1 through, hold on, through 5.22. May I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
I will move the consent agenda.
Okay, I will second. And I always like to go over the summary of the consent agenda just so that we have some transparency. It consists of CSC summaries and resolutions for the Chappaqua School Foundation Instagrams that were discussed through superintendent's report. Thank you very much, CSF.
Yes, thank you. They've done tremendous work for us.
Tremendous, yes. Participation of one student from Austin on our ski team. We've done this for many years and it's wonderful that we're able to do that. Consent judgment on a tax cert proceedings and authorization to pay that amount from our tax cert reserve fund. The exclusive right to sell to William Reavis Company, this is for the Zara property, and related payments for services as discussed in our superintendent's report. There's some budget transfers, some authorization for litigation. We have bid awards for construction and materials regarding fencing, maintenance, and repair. We have bid awards regarding video technology for the Tiamat West Orchard. This was part of the CSF grant. We have an approval from a service provider for an inventory management system. We have an SMOA with COSA, a hardware lease for the Horse Greeley Steam Center, and the very generous grant from the Newcastle United for Peace. And we does it through the consent agenda. Any discussion, any questions, any of you? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. And now on the Facilities, we have an acknowledgement of a change order under item 6.1. May I have a motion to acknowledge the change order under this element?
And move that we acknowledge the change order.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have our financials, item 7.1 through 7.3. I'd like a motion to acknowledge receipt of the revenue status report, of the appropriation status report, and treasurer's report, all three from November 2020. May I have a motion and a second?
So now we're to the, the first.
Second. Any questions, comments on the financials? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is a special board meeting that will be an executive session only on Tuesday, January 5th at 6:00 PM, followed by a regular board meeting on Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. Actually, we have added at 6:00 PM on that day, a joint work session with the Town of Newcastle Board. This will be a joint work session to discuss the Form Based Code at 6:00 PM, to be followed by our regular meeting on that day, January 13th, at 7:30 PM. And at that meeting, we will have our budget preview. And we will also have the results of our independent consultants who have taken a look at various components of the Form Based Code, DTEIS, and have, will come up with their analysis of impact to CCSG. And this meeting will be followed by another meeting on January 27th, which will be a regular board meeting. And at that one, we'll discuss anti-racism and social justice education. We'll have an update, which will be similar to the update given in September. Christine, was that the September 14th meeting? That we have a presentation, so this will be something similar to that one. And, okay, that concludes notice of future meetings. And it's time to adjourn. So may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Uh, to adjourn at 9:00, 10:00?
Okay, I will second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you're now adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a happy holidays.
Bye, Kelly.